When will I be? When will I be in Texas?
It's almost nine o'clock already.
Oh, I gotta get a calendar if I can. The sixteenth is on the calendar?
Yep. Yep, as of right now.
Didn't Charlie get you his calendar?
No.
Yeah, that's our.
Well, I wish I would've known that.
Usually comes with the prescriptions.
Well, we had a little snafu with the calendars, there was a fair amount that the company that did them, their QACUC wasn't very good.
We had the prescription.
They misspelled Fargo one one of them.
February had three days.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, we'll call the regular, or no, the special, special regular Mercer County Commission meeting to order. Uh, we have the, Shannon's got the role. We got the agenda in front of us.
Question. I received one in the mail and then I received this one in the packet. Which one are we using? Are we using the one?
With Carmen on there. I, I emailed it twice.
Yeah, was it within like ten minutes?
The one with Carmen is the right one?
Yep.
Good. That's the one I planned on using.
Okay, any other additions to the agenda?
I'll move to approve the agenda as, because it's a special meeting, right?
Yeah, you can.
Oh. I second.
I second that we.
Okay.
Yeah, this is a, no additions, right Shannon?
Great.
Okay, Travis Marvin. All right. Pardon?
You wanna get this?
Yeah, Travis made the motion, Marvin second to approve the agenda. So Travis, how do you vote?
Aye.
Marvin?
Aye.
Gene, aye, motion carried.
I have a question. Every organization of the board, do we wanna wait until we have a full board?
I think so. I, I agree with that.
This might get tricky with just the three of you.
Well, exactly. And someone might have a portfolio that they'd rather transfer?
Yeah, so both the reorganization of the board and the reorganization of portfolios will move to the February second meeting?
Let me ask you this, this is a silly question. This is a special meeting, we can't modify the agenda, can we do that?
Well, you can just cross it off.
Okay. I, let's do that in the motion though, right?
I think it'd probably be good to do a motion, then it gets on the agenda.
Recorded, yep. I'm. Reorganization, which other one did you talk about?
The reorg- reorganization, reorganization of the board. So you just wanna?
And number ten down. Mister Chairman, I move that we reschedule reorganization of the board and portfolio updates until we have a more members.
Well, not portfolio updates, just reorganization of portfolios.
But it's.
Yeah, we can still do portfolio updates, just not the reorganization.
Yep, yep.
I know what you're getting at there.
Where is it at?
So it says portfolios slash reorganization.
Okay, I got it. We're gonna do away with this as to reorganization of portfolio updates.
This one here?
Yep.
Got it.
Okay, so your motion is to move the reorganizational meeting to February, correct?
February second meeting.
The February second. February second, correct. Moves forward one day.
Yep.
That's Marvin. Travis seconds that?
I'll second that, yes.
My only discussion, if this can even have discussion, I think it can, is according to the North Dakota Century Code, are we able to do that? Cause it does specifically state in the first meeting in, the first meeting after the first of the year. I just wanna bring that to the attention of the rest of the commission, but I have no problem moving it, but I just wanna make sure we're not gonna violate something there.
Do you have any full time?
Yeah.
As far as the chairman, yes. Because of the chairman might be required to, it says specifically the chairman should be reelected after the first meeting of the year. It doesn't say reorganization of the board.
Yeah, so we, we can, uh, we'll table that for now until it, oh, you get it real quick.
He told me to call him if anything came up.
And he's like three minutes in?
Long as we're having a little bit of discussion there, just for the members here.
Hi Todd, this is Shannon. Uh, we only have three members on the board here at this time and we're supposed to reelect the board, according to the Century Code. Is there, is there an issue?
I hear you.
That's fine. Just for the fellow, fellow board members, one thing that was suggested to me in the past is that the.
Alright, thank you.
Chairmanship be transferred to different individuals each year, so everyone has a chance to have that experience.
He, um.
Not that I'm trying to change it, I'm just telling you that.
Yeah.
He's okay with us moving it to February second.
Okay. Hearing that, Marvin, how do you vote?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Gene, aye, motion carried. Organizational meeting will be February second. Approve the minutes of the December fifteenth meeting. Do we have them in front of us?
Should be in the packet, yeah.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Mister Chairman, I so approve, as presented.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, Marvin?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Gene, aye, motion carried. Review and approve bills. Oh boy.
Do you wanna do Shannon vote while she's here?
Take a little bit.
Yeah, I'll stick Shannon.
Shannon and then.
Pardon?
Shannon.
She's got a request for a new bookcase. Do you wanna do Shannon first?
You can go, Shannon.
Aaron doesn't slide very well.
Me and Toby. Pushing into.
Hi.
Hi Shannon.
Good morning Shannon.
Would you guys like to come in and try out the shelf that I have in there and see how you like it before I ask for a new one?
I have used it, but it's pretty sticky.
It's not very fun.
No.
Uh, it's difficult to use, we struggle, the books are heavy, Amber's little. Um, we did get a quote last fall, actually when I was doing my budget, for around three thousand dollars for the table. It was a verbal quote and he came in November and he measured the space and it turned out that we needed a little bit bigger than initially planned. So that's why the quote turned out to be a thousand dollars or so more than we anticipated.
So what is your quote for?
It is for thirty-eight, forty-nine, and I think the original one we last did a budget was around three thousand.
Is that gonna fit in your budget?
Is it what?
Is it gonna fit in your budget?
Yeah, out of that fund, I've got thirty thousand dollars in my preservation fund, so.
Actually have, uh, maybe one thousand dollars in the reserve.
Twenty-seven. Oh, yeah. So I don't think it should be wrong.
She should be.
Okay.
I think we're covered. And.
When's it gonna get here? If we, if we approve it, when's it get here?
When does it get here? He said it'll probably take about three or four months because of.
Oh my goodness.
Yeah, that's why I wanted to do this back in November.
Thank you.
And the price of shipping, he was able to push the quote back, cause it was due February first, but he was able to push it back until March, I think. And then shipping changed a little bit, but it looks like it went down, so we're good there. Other than that, other than that, the quote still is the same, around thirty-eight hundred.
Yeah, I'll move to approve the purchase of the bookcase for the recorder's office as the quote.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Mine was only if it would fit in your budget, and you said it does, so. Any other discussion? Hearing none, Travis?
Aye.
Marvin?
Aye.
Gene, aye, motion carried.
Aye, thank you.
Go buy your bookcase.
Thanks Shannon.
Okay.
Enjoy.
Review.
Let us know when it comes in.
Yes. You, they'll be quite a affair, cause they're gonna come with a big truck and a lift eight.
Oh, I just wanted to see how nice it is.
Oh, we're not moving some stuff around too, so you wanna come help with that? Well, she'll be recruiting before it gets to you.
Give me a call.
Okay, as usual, we have a question on a bill, pull it aside, otherwise I sign them as I get them and we'll approve them then when we're, everything is, all questions have been answered.
Do we have someone at nine thirty? I didn't even look.
Uh, Carmen.
Okay, Carmen. Cause I think we got quite a pile.
Yeah.
Well, good morning Liza.
Good morning.
The wind's slowing down, I'm just being facetious.
No, one of our probationers.
Welcome.
Good morning.
You're just in time too.
Go through these big stack of bills, huh?
Very much.
So, uh, this has got sticky on it, which is, highway department's gonna explain, this is the.
Yeah, they're on the agenda for it.
Okay.
Good morning. Morning Candy.
Good morning.
How do you like that wind out there in the garbage business?
Oh, it's fabulous. Job security, that's what it's called.
You get paid twice for the same stuff?
Right? Go pick it up again. Not good.
Did I just have to sign this one?
Yeah.
Oh. Can't always be keeping an eye on you.
It's hard, isn't it?
Apparently need to.
Well, they were signed about six of them. Same thing here?
I don't know, you might, uh. No Dan this morning? Oh, that's right, he said he couldn't be here.
Yeah, he said it.
The paper stuff.
It depended on how well he met his deadline, whether he was gonna be here or not.
I remember that now. Did the rent go up at the, for the extension office?
Yeah, it's on a tiered thing, isn't it? Like it was, yeah.
And just for your information, Liza, the three commissioners here decided to move the reorganization of the board to the February second meeting.
Oh, so that we can have everybody here?
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, it was just the three of us at the time, so.
Well, and just so you know, I won't be here at the first meeting in February.
No. I would hope those to say that.
Yep. Well, then you're either gonna end up with something that you don't want, or you're not gonna get it. I'll deal with it when it comes, I'm busy going.
Before we go back and revisit it today.
Yeah, because then it's a worse piece.
Yep, because otherwise it'll be.
Exactly.
Because he's gone to sixteenth, so when you're looking at work. Oh my goodness.
You may have to revisit that today, Mister Chairman.
Then we'll educate him on the recall.
Yeah. Generally, I know we, we, and we can agree to make exceptions, but generally that's the whole idea of Robin's Rules of Order, so you don't revisit an item ten times at the same meeting.
We don't have, but changes of order in the same meeting often sometimes. It was an unusual situation.
Like I said, I'm, I'm open, I'm just throwing that out there.
Are you grabbing from the top, Marv, or are you grabbing from the?
Not one of them, I should be into a mist.
Thank you.
Surprised it didn't hit my hands off.
It was close.
That's why I kinda hesitated, I'm like, did he pull from the top?
I seen you going, wait a minute.
There's that file. You should look at the mine spill for.
Oh, really?
There's, there's more.
It's not attached in there.
Travis, you, you're a language analyst.
There's language analyst.
Yeah, you did eat hardly any cookies.
Oh geez.
How can you supply cookies for less than five dollars?
I, I don't know. They, they were a week old.
Got him out of that bin.
Yeah. Reduced for immediate sale. Kind of that close to untrustability, though, but still.
But still, right?
It's a lot.
Oh, this is a normal, isn't it? March. It's good though.
Yep.
Has anyone heard how, uh, Lucky's doing?
I haven't.
This bill here for ninety-five hundred to the Hazen, we talked about that, can someone refresh my memory?
The fire department?
The fire.
Fire and rescue.
Yeah, ninety-five hundred to Hazen Fire Department.
Yep, we put that in our budget for every year.
I know that we do, I'll just re.
And I just have to.
Every time we, when I see this, it reminds me of what Jessica told us that. You cannot give donations, so is this crossing that line?
I don't believe so.
I think this is, no.
We've done this for the ten years that I.
Yeah, it would be if we, they're like a, um, almost like another political subdivision, so to speak.
Yeah.
They're not a.
Kinda like the ambulance.
I don't wanna use a name, because then I'll be picking out one entity, but like some other charitable organization.
So we gotta get cocaine twice.
Well, we can do that for charitable and for elderly and stuff like that.
Nope.
I just wanted to get my memory refreshed. Probably have to do it before I get ten minutes.
Cause there's what, three or four of those thousand gallons, we could do it all in one vote.
Oh, okay.
And recognize it.
No, one's on the eighteenth.
I'm surprised I remember that, the meeting was today, not tomorrow. Well, if I fly out tomorrow, that's why I remember.
It says the twenty eighth. Just like purely because where they jail, jail.
So far, we'll see.
Maintenance.
Everything changed after I flight coming home.
Oh, so that's because we have more tanks.
Yeah. Cause this one was four hundred gallons, this one's six hundred fifty gallons. So that's a line.
Four seventy-eight.
Hi Carmen.
Good morning Carmen.
Good morning.
Six eighty. Ten eighty. No, just a little.
Yeah, well. Those are a lot broken.
Apparently, I didn't, didn't that realize?
Yeah.
I was listening to you guys go through these three, so I'm not never really, have a whole lot, because it's already been served by.
Yeah. But when it's cold, it's. That's where that, uh, energy out of.
Oh, yeah.
Wasn't that talked about in December?
Yep.
I was gonna say can be, but will be helpful.
Yes. Shannon, did the mileage change to fifty-nine, or is it fifty-eight point five?
Fifty-eight point five, but Mercer County's always mounted to the next.
To the highest, okay.
System.
Alright, thank you.
Yep.
I don't know if that's Lucky does, or.
Good morning Dad. I saw you speak in, I never said a little.
Good morning Dad, now I can see.
Sneaky dad.
I shouldn't say sneaky, you came in untrustably. Gotta be careful, I might go into paper when I say this.
So those printers go out once in a while, or are they, are they print?
Um, but if they get different rigs?
Okay, so they're specific to the.
Yep, and you have to have, I gotta look at some, you have to have a certain kind of printer for the, inside the rigs, so. Like this. Goes with this one.
Is it, it's the same line?
Is this, I think it's in here somewhere.
I think that's the one I just.
Is that the one? Cause I thought I remember seeing that. Shannon, is it already, if I pull this out, it stapled in with this one, but I think it goes with that one? Is that okay?
I don't know how we want to put them.
Okay, oh, you guys have stapler in there?
Like you just put it on the top, it doesn't make any difference in order.
No.
The same sheet?
Well, it's a different invoice number though on it.
It's weird because this only says two oh three twenty-six.
Different date too, same amount.
But it's like the same, yeah.
It's got a different invoice and different date, same wall.
Cause that doesn't go at all with this.
Yeah.
Stuff. I remember the same thing. I just remembered seeing that amount and then reading what it was for.
This is just the sales number, this one's the invoice.
Okay.
So yeah, they go together.
Okay. I knew it didn't go with that.
Yeah. Yeah.
Right?
Printer and fuel don't go together.
No, I'm like, wait a minute. That doesn't seem quite right.
Did you catch that?
Remember our previous, yeah?
That's just a good one.
Yeah, or.
Just the collaboration development, I'm saying.
And what are they?
And what are they?
They get out loans to. You guys approved the budget, was it in there? That was that, um. It probably was in our board.
Probably, yeah.
So is it all Golden Valley on, NBU?
I'm Rough Rider.
Well, you're a town, right?
Yeah. Even though my mailing address is Golden Valley.
Yeah, cause in Beulah. Depending on what part of town you're in, you're a Rough Rider.
Yeah. When I used to live in Beulah, I was Rough Rider.
Okay. I've been both.
Oh.
And sometimes it's kind of funny, well, not really funny, but.
You can see some people's lights on and other people's, yeah, really.
Some, somebody had a. Interruption, power. Bet you can be double fed, maybe never lose power.
Right? I'll just switch over to the other one, thank you.
We'll see, if, if, if there's anything left, we'll leave that after.
Okay, we can maybe squeeze it in after, um.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Think that's possible, Mr. Chairman?
What's that?
Squeeze a little bit of organization out of Congress, like, and maybe a corner. That'll lead up to a ready. It's got deadlines.
You didn't give it to your employees, anybody's business.
Uh, when you move it to Tuesday, and that says deadline day.
Yeah.
Um, Jay, has, has got the, the health task, the health task court, what is that again? Health, community health needs assessment is meeting today.
Yep.
Uh, this morning, Senator Hovind is in Beulah, um, this morning. There's another thing to do, and a county commissioner.
And the other six days, you don't have much going on.
It's the annual, yes.
I did see you last night, Dan.
Yep.
Can we make you wait a few minutes, Carmen? Sorry, how about that? Means we did meet at the beginning of this month, we got one big pile of bills.
An hour ago, okay.
Everybody wants their dues this month.
Yeah.
I wonder if other companies have to delay some of those, you know, until they get their tax revenue.
Yeah, they're like, wow. I'm paying extra twenty-five for being late.
Yeah. Is there any expensive tires? Only a hundred bucks a piece. Me, when I, when tires are my pickup, they're like, four, it's.
Oh, yeah?
For that, that's a tonner of. I don't want to make it gross. I'll just chuck it to myself and I see it okay. Holiday, they're okay.
Alright. Nothing special. I just wanna make sure you don't miss this one.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, same, we have shops in, uh. Whole part of town, or new part of town, I should say, whole part of town of NBU.
Yep. Must be NBU.
Not talking about the state extreme.
Right?
I like it.
I'm not questioning this bill, but I'm questioning the practice. Do you plan fertilizer in January? I just need educated, cause I've never.
I don't know if that's just purchasing, or does it say?
It says twelve, twelve, twenty-one, how? It probably just purchased.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Never mind, told you.
No, I looked at it too, and I was like, I, I think it's.
Great, I, I double checked it too, I'm like, wh- why, why do we have a lawn care?
Just purchasing product, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'd better have Jean explain it to me, because he is a farmer.
Well, if they were buying it in January, I'd say it's to save money, cause it's.
No, that part I get, I mean.
Spring is gonna.
Before I thought of that, I was waiting.
That, or are they predicting that some stuff may be gone too? Like, unavailable, so.
There's a whole lot of that.
Yeah.
I think if you had warehouse space, you'd be doing pretty well right now.
Right? Mm-hmm.
Didn't have any grain, so might as well fill it with.
Might as well, right?
There you go, donors, where are they? Yes, yeah. Let's. Treasurer? The treasurer's office? I think, yeah, two states of Texas, I'll check that. This is it?
Yep.
A little pressure from the first level, I think.
Gotta set the pace for you all.
That's right. I mean, you're almost out of cash here.
No, that's what you guys are for too. Work as a team right now.
Work as a team.
Do we wanna delay approval of the bills until we talk about that payoff, I believe?
What was your question?
Do we wanna delay approval of the bills until, um.
The road?
Can, yeah, the, the road guys are here to talk about the payoff in unit one oh one.
Oh, agree with that.
Makes sense.
Okay, we can sure do that. Carmen?
Ready?
We're ready.
Okay, so I'm here today to talk about our hazard mitigation plan, the five-year update. Literally, January fifth, um, I got an email from the City of Beulah's applying for a brick fund for a hundred fifty thousand dollars. And, and I, I got the information there, but. I had applied for this mitigation grant, or the update of our mitigation plan, um, last year, and we were waiting on funding. And that same day, I got the funding.
Oh, okay.
So, what I'm asking is, um, to sign the agreement, we, we need to make a KLJ, cause they're the ones who did the, the other five-year update, and I've worked with them. And they have a really, our plan is a really quick yellow belt. And, um. And actually, I work well with Joel, he just did all of the towns, he did the update. So the thing is, the state said that Beulah City, they're gonna hold the money if we can get this update done in six months. So, um, and Joel and I talked about it, and I know we can do it. And today, I wanna not only ask, what I'm asking is, it's gonna be twenty-five thousand dollars with KLJ, and that's the agreement. That I need a signature, well, I need a motion and a signature from the chairman, so that I can get that going on KLJ's part. And, um, and then the grant, just so you know, the grant is a forty-nine thousand dollar grant from the federal government. For this mitigation plan, and seventy-five percent of that is gonna come back to the county, once we get this plan done and approved. And we send all our bills back to state, and we get seventy-five percent, which would be eighteen thousand seven hundred and fifty. And then the cost to the county would be about six thousand two hundred and fifty. But with that six thousand, any in-kind stuff that I do, the travel, anything like that, goes onto that six thousand, so. So, uh, that's kind of the financial end of it, and what I'm asking today, but also today, I wanted to give you a quick. What they call is a kickoff meeting, just to kind of let you know how this plan is gonna be revised. And what I need to do with all the entities, cause I gotta meet with all the cities, and for the same thing, we have to review our hazards. The hazard mitigation plan has to be in place in order for us to receive federal funding for disaster. And one of the reasons it got pushed off, I was waiting for funding, and, but at least the state's gonna work with us, it was in the money. So, right now, um, okay, like, the second page tells how, okay, we need to have three meetings with the LIPC regarding our hazards. So the first one we did was the other day, um, and, and I explained to them this meetings we have to have. And then the second one, we're gonna review the hazards. The hazards for the county are attached to the back of this panel. And I wanna have that in March, and then I've gotta have two public meetings, once this. I need to do the same thing with the public, I need them to come in, and we need to review all the hazards with the public, so we get some public input. The, the idea of the whole plan is to get everybody's input. This isn't one person, this is a whole community saying, these are our hazards, what needs to be worked on? Cause when we put it into this plan, we get those FEMA funds easier, like Beulah. City of Beulah's getting a hundred fifty thousand, and that's because they're part of this plan, and every city has to sign up on this plan. So, um, and right now, I've got federal, I think I've got appointments with every city for February, so that'll be done then. So my first meeting with the cities will be there, and I also emailed them their hazards. And I'm probably gonna have a few more meetings with the cities, just to get their input, make it easier on them, cause it's hard to get people, you know, everybody's got meetings. So, let's see, second one, yeah, I guess April, March. And then, once we get a draft plan, that's when I wanna come back and meet again, go over the hazards. So, what I want asking you guys to do is, in your time, look at these hazards, if there's any input you wanna have, you could tell Liza, cause she's on our LIPC. Or you can come to the meeting, but, or, or send me the information, so that we can include it when we talk in our March meeting, which we haven't set a date for. But, um, we're looking for input on that. And then, once we get that draft plan, that's when I have to have another public meeting, cause we need to make sure that the public has their input, once it's done. And then, we can also do a survey if we decide to do that, to get input from the public. And then, once that plan is finalized, then the state will go through it, approve it, or disapprove it if something's missing, then we send it back, and we get it done. And then, after that, then it goes to FEMA, which doesn't really take that long. And sometimes they have the cities pre-approve it before they send it off to FEMA, and then, once that's done, then I take all the bills and send it back into FEMA, then we get our.
And then you said, like, any of your mileage and stuff like that, that we reimburse you for, counts towards our, our contribution?
Yeah, any expenses that I have, that is related to any of this, yes, that counts as a.
Do you have this in your budget?
That, you know, I, I know the line item is twenty thousand.
Is that in your EM or your NISL?
EM, absolutely.
And you need twenty-five, right?
Twenty-five. And, and that's where.
Yeah.
We need twenty-five now.
But the money's coming back. And once it's done in six months, so by June, it'll be back. But, that doesn't mean I'm gonna go over my whole budget, but yes.
Not to go back into the general funds and stuff.
Definitely, the general fund is gonna change.
So it's gonna cause us initially twenty-five of really eighteen seven fifty back?
Yes, but yeah, the county's gotta pay it all out.
Correct?
Mm-hmm.
And basically, if we don't do it, then it makes everybody in the county ineligible for FEMA.
Right?
Yeah.
Which includes the Water Resource Board, every town, every, yeah, it's. So, it's kind of one of those things where.
You gotta do it.
You gotta do it.
Exactly, it's in our best interest.
I was gonna use a.
It's in our best interest.
I was gonna use a fancy word, but I won't.
The only thing that would happen if the line item isn't important, is you put it off till next year, and then they won't give their.
Are we still eligible for FEMA right now, even though this isn't done?
Right now, now that we're aware of it. And honestly, when I put in for this, this grant money's last year. I was waiting to get it done last year, and we never got it. And then, now we, I've been waiting, and I figured if we put it in like we were supposed to, FEMA would cover us there, cause they know we were in the process waiting for these grant funds. They did.
So when was our last, um?
It was due, um, to have it completed June of this year, but I put it in last year, the mitigation grant, cause you always wait for the grants to pay for these things. This is just the way it's done, and that's why they have these grant funds. But last year, they didn't give the state any, so they didn't have any to put out, and I just assumed, if you're doing everything like they say, they should cover you, so you could get one. And then, it could wait till next year, so I could budget.
And I don't think it really triggered until they said, can we look at your.
Right?
Hazard mitigation plan, and then they saw the, the expiration date on it, which was.
But still, I, I knew that it happens. But I knew that also I paid it last year, and I just, but.
Well, it sounds to me like we have limited choice here.
Yep.
Are we looking for two motions?
So.
No, just one, and I put it on the first page.
Let me see, yeah.
Well, to get things going, I'll move to approve the twenty-five thousand dollar professional service agreement between KLJ and Mercer County Commission, to update the Mercer County multi-hazard mitigation plan.
And I'll second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Travis?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Laura?
Marvin?
Aye.
Gee. Gene, aye. Motion carried. Sorry about that, Marvin.
So I'm going to have to sign this and then I'll just make a copy and I'll give it to you.
Well, I can unless you...
No, I'll...
Okay. You want it legible, so...
What's that?
You want it legible so you can fill the rest in.
And then I'm the one that's going to receive all the notices just because I'm the one that's working. But I'll get your copy and give them the... All right, that's what I needed. Any other questions?
Not today.
Thank you, Carmen.
So, uh... Oh. Sure.
Well, I don't know how to actually go back on this.
Who made the motion?
Other than rescind.
And you seconded it.
And have Marvin retract his motion. I think...
You can't retract once it's been voted on.
No, but, um...
You have to make a new motion.
Well, it was, it was the table action, correct?
Yep.
Well...
It was the table and talk every second?
Yes.
If we have a motion, it's voted.
Right.
We need a new one to reopen, to reschedule to today.
I haven't...
Even though it's on a special meeting agenda?
They say, can we do that?
Yeah, because of the agenda.
It was on the agenda to begin with, so I'm just trying to think what's the proper procedure.
If, if we can, I don't know how to, how we can circumvent that.
Well, is it really going to make, because I won't be here at the next meeting, right? But hopefully...
There's no guarantee that we'll have four people next meeting too.
Right.
And then the following meeting...
Somebody else is going to be gone?
Yeah, someone else is going to be gone.
Right.
So we're pushing.
Well, it's, I'll just throw this out there. I have, uh, I would be interested in still being the chairman. And I think, so it's not that I want to get off. So with that said, I have no problem waiting until February 2nd. But I just got to go along with whatever the rest of the commission's wishes are. It's just, I don't know how to, because generally that, I just want to reiterate that otherwise, we could bring the same thing up ten times in the same meeting.
Right.
Generally, that's the whole process of Robert's rules is to, so you don't do that.
And I'm, I'm actually okay with not being a part of the decision process. I'll just take what I get. I'm fine with that.
Okay, well, so that we don't, let's, let's just put it off till February 2nd for now. We can even, I don't know.
I'm good either way. Doesn't matter.
Road is, duplicate warrant under other business, duplicate warrant number four five zero six six, Rachel Poitras, seventy-five dollars. Did I pronounce that correctly?
I'll move to approve the duplicate warrant.
And I'll second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Travis?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Marvin? Gene, aye. Motion carried. Land, let's do recorder fees of five thousand six hundred and twenty-six dollars and ninety cents. Do I have a motion to approve?
I have a motion to approve recorder's fees of five thousand six twenty-six point nine zero.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Marvin, how do you vote?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Gene, aye. Motion carried. December sheriff's fees of three thousand four hundred and thirty-six dollars and seventy-nine cents. Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve the December sheriff fees.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Travis?
Aye.
Marvin? Liza?
Aye.
Gene, aye. Motion carried. Resolution of, from City of Beulah, oh, I ain't going to read all that. B B one four four eight eight one six zero four one three. And that is for...
Are those those city lots or...
For closed properties, yeah.
So I have the resolution from the city attorney and the city for those two properties for Beulah and the check for two dollars. And then I also have a check for one dollar from the city of Zapp from the resolution. So I just need the board to accept those.
Okay, do I have a motion for the City of Beulah?
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution from the City of Beulah for those two entities.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
Yes, mostly just clarification. There's four properties that for, for closed and we're selling them back to the City of Beulah for a dollar. Is that correct?
There's two.
Two.
One's in the City of Beulah and one's in the City of Zapp. Can you ask for a dollar? You'd made that motion in November.
Okay, for, as for Marvin's question, what were there, four, four properties in Beulah?
Two.
Well, there was two that went back, but two were purchased at the sheriff's sale.
Okay.
At the foreclosure.
At the foreclosure sale, yeah.
Okay. That answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Liza?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Marvin?
Aye.
Gene, aye. Motion carried. Resolution for the City of Zapp properties.
I'll move to approve the resolution for City of Zapp.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Travis?
Aye.
Marvin? Liza?
Aye.
Gene, aye. Motion carried. The jail policy and procedure manual adoption.
Yep, that's just standard. Every year, we, the board adopts the procedure and policy manual for the sheriff's department. First entry code. I just need a motion.
Do I have a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve the twenty-twenty-two jail policy and procedure manual.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. Travis?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Marvin?
Aye.
Gene, aye. Motion carried. Mercer County, ah, Hazen Golf Club liquor license, four fifty-two annual on, annual on-sale beer liquor license.
I move to approve.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Marvin?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Gene, aye. Motion carried. Holy cow. Twenty-twenty-one budget amendments. You got a little bit on that one?
I don't need to talk about it. Let's see what I can mention.
I have some comments on that one.
S R F funding. Well, we got three minutes. We could just do the road. We can move to road issues. I don't think we have much public input here that we need to worry about, so... Ken?
Morning.
Morning.
Good morning, Ken.
Um, can we, we, can we, we'll start. We have a question with, for you on unit one oh one.
Okay.
Payment of that.
We got a question on it?
We didn't have a question. It just had a sticky on there. Wait till...
Yeah, but he was bringing it in.
Are you, oh, you're going to bring that up?
Yep.
Sorry, I jumped the gun. Go ahead, Ken.
First one is pushing a snow on the county right away. I'd just like to see if we could put something in the newspaper stating that we, you know, not so people push their snow from their drives out into the county right away.
Or across the...
Across the road because it creates, you know, a snow trap. And then number two, if a blade, when the blade does come by and if it gets hard, you know, it hits the wing and could possibly throw them in the ditch, so...
Do you have something that you've put in there in the past?
Well, I don't, I think we did a year, a couple, a few years ago. We really haven't had a winter, but we should probably try to do it every, I suppose, November or something.
I could love to see if I have something taped up around.
Yeah.
Think a friendly reminder in the paper would be a really good idea.
But, you know, on that note, I mean, if, if they do it, and we know we have that notice, what, Mike, what should we do after that? First time of warning, second time, what are your thoughts?
We'll deal with that then. Is that as right with you?
Well, I'd like to have it, I mean, I guess it's kind of in the middle of winter now, but I mean, I still think we should have something that, so it doesn't continue if, I mean, at least there's a reprimand for doing it, I mean...
What would it take to fix it? Like a loader and truck?
Yeah, you'd be a loader, tractor with the blow around to get it out of it. Depends how steep that ditch is, but...
Is this considered an encroachment?
Yes, it is. Yep.
So what are the laws that come with that?
I don't, usually Jessica always had us put a letter out, you know, saying, you know, encroaching it.
They have to fix it. They have something to do with it.
Yep, right.
Fix it and bill it.
Right.
Does it seem to be in particular areas? Is it limited or do you have a broad...
It's pretty limited. I mean, but there is a few that do it, I mean...
Or do we want to just send...
Because I would almost...
People that are doing it.
Yeah, I'd almost want to agree with Marvin, well, I don't know what his actual intent was, but I think if we have a limited amount of people, maybe we can address that individually as they happen. And then depending on, you know, what...
What circumstances are, are severe that the action could be?
Yeah, because my, my only thing would be depending on the amount that it encroaches or that it is, we'd probably just say, okay, you're going to get billed for this or something to that.
Well, I mean, the first thing, I think, put it in the paper and then, you know, call that individual up, tell them that it has to be removed. And if they don't want to remove it, well, then if we have to come and remove it, I think it, we remove it and bill them, I mean, it's...
And I don't think Todd would have a company, you know, that...
Right.
Right, and like...
Right. And say, I think we should have the state's attorney review everything that we want to do, but...
Could we possibly, in that notice that we don't want this to continue? Doing this is actually an encroachment and there is a possibility of perpetrator being billed for it?
We can look and see if we have that in the...
I have that century code.
In the past too, or, you know...
I'll just have to look at some of those letters from this fall.
Because like I say, the biggest, creates a snow trap, especially if it's on the north and west side, if that's where the winds are blowing. Then second, if they get hard and that snow plow hits them with that wing, hopefully it breaks the wing, the nuts for the, or the bolts for the wing, but if not, they'll go right in the ditch, so...
Well, the newspaper flipping could just say, do not push snow to county right away according to North Dakota century code.
Right.
The encroachment line.
Yeah, and then we can just go, if we can, if, because usually it's just a few people, I mean...
And it's not just the county, the D O T is also making comments too.
Yep. Yep.
I'll draw something up for you and let you see it and let Todd review it.
How it works. And then the next one is that payoff of unit one oh one. That was one of the blades that was leased, I think, if I'm, it's like a hundred and eighty thousand nine fifty-six ten, ten cents. That was, we would, I would like to pay that one off.
Is that the one we put down a hundred and twenty-five on last year?
I think so. It was one of them like that. It's, the one over in Golden Valley is the one oh one. But, you know, technically, we would, we have three leased machines. I'd like to get two of them done this year. So we only have one machine that we lease.
And is the end of the lease anyway on it or...
Well, no, it's the beginning.
It's the beginning.
Yeah, but remember, we talked about that, you would save money for interest on, yeah. I know it's a chunk of change, but I mean, over the time...
Is this in your budget already, Ken, or not?
Yes, we got four hundred and forty thousand, I think. Yeah.
And it's in the bills, so I think if we just approve the bills as submitted, it would take care of it, right?
Yep. Right.
Okay. I'll move to approve the bills as they were presented.
I'll second that.
Oh boy, now we're back to the bills.
Yeah, four forty-one is what, four hundred and forty-one that we have in that line item.
Okay, I got a motion to, and a second to approve the bills as presented. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Travis?
Aye.
Marvin?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Gene? Aye. Aye, pass. Motion passed. I didn't sleep much last night. Sorry about that. I was going to say Gene, motion passed, but Gene says I motion passed. Okay.
There's, there's a medical term for that.
Ah, don't know, yeah. I think there's a few. Some of them are even psychological.
The reason I said that is...
Okay, back to you, Ken.
Uh, next one is purchase of a new copying machine. I'm recommending that we go with a fireside, it's a three oh six C I task alpha. The one we have in the office, and we talked about it last year at budget time, because normally in our line item for office supplies, we go about six fifty to seven hundred and fifty yearly. And this year for twenty twenty-two, we had that six, six thousand two hundred and fifty. And we were going to let that go as far as, as long as we could with the copying machine with the one we have, but the thing is, you can't get toner cartridges for them. It's getting, it's outdated. You can't get supplies for, and we're at the end of the, we don't, we can't contract it for them to come up and fix it anymore. So, and I know we've had it, oh gosh, ten, ten years, eleven years. But the reason why we went with that sixty-two fifty is because Rachel had got a quote during, for five thousand four ninety-nine. But when she talked to them a couple, two, three weeks ago, they have a refurbished one for twenty-five ninety-nine. And the refurbished one is, it's a used machine. They used it at the, oh, for the special session at the, at the, or at the state capital. But it still has the same warranty as a brand-new one. So I thought, wow, at twenty-five ninety-nine, and she figured out, like, over the three years, we're still priced for three years with copies with that fireside one is three thousand nine fifty. And with the advanced A B M, it's four thousand six hundred and eighty, if we lease it, if we were to lease it from A B M. And I think if I remember right, the, the lease prices from fireside were comparable to A B M, but I'm, don't quote me. But with that, you know, you're still going to have to pay, and that's including that contract where they come up and Rachel looked back, we've never went over copies.
Okay.
You know, that, right.
Because when people start buying from other places than A B M, they'll go over their copies and then...
Then you get charged.
I don't have the money in my budget. How am I going to keep this paper?
But we've, we've had good luck with fireside and, like I say, I mean, it's...
And does it come with your toner?
Yes.
And, and then all their service work included in that?
Yep. But like I say, if we go over...
Usually it is.
We got to pay for it. But that's no different than even, I think...
So this is for three years then for twenty-five ninety-nine?
Thirty-nine fifty.
Thirty-nine, because we still got to pay that con, that contract is in there.
Okay.
Yep. I don't know what that yearly contract is, but that's, this thirty-nine fifty's including that in there with the purchase price. So it's like whatever thirty-nine fifty divided by three is.
That contract is even if you buy a new one, you still pay.
Right, yep, you still, because, yep.
Well, for discussion, I'm going to make a motion that we approve the purchase of this new copying machine, the refurbished one for twenty-nine...
Twenty, two thousand five ninety-nine even.
Twenty-five ninety-nine and a three-year service agreement.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, discussion.
Is this in the Beulah shop or what, where's it?
Yeah, at the Beulah shop, yeah. We don't have one at any other ones.
Need more discussion? Hearing none. Marvin?
Aye.
Travis?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Gene, aye. Motion carried.
Please thank Rachel for finding that deal.
Yeah, as I could say, we, we've had good luck with them, so, but it was nice that we checked that other place too, so, shock early, but...
You got a fifty-three hundred dollar machine for twenty-six hundred bucks. Great. Good work.
So we should apply our, our provisions after the legislative session?
Yeah.
Government surplus.
Okay, anything else, Ken?
No, I don't have nothing.
I don't have anything for you. Anyone else have any questions for Ken? Thank you.
Yep.
Have a good day.
You too.
Yeah, Candy?
I actually put that on there?
Well, landfill S R F funding, I guess. Go ahead. I'm sure that's what she's here about.
Yeah. Sherwin and I had our meeting with the North Dakota Department of Environmental Quality, is that right?
D U Q, yeah.
For the, about the S R F funding. And we hadn't gotten too far into our conversation, maybe five minutes or so, when she asked if we had received any ARPA dollars. And I told her, yep, and the amount we had received. And she said that anything that qualifies for the S R F funding would also qualify under, using it under your ARPA dollars. And she thought it was silly for us to be requesting fifty thou, to borrow fifty thousand dollars. Just, she said it wouldn't even have to, we wouldn't have even had to go all the way through the process because it was such a small amount of work and it just had to, we had to have met and... Just, she said it wouldn't even have to, it wouldn't have even had to go all the way through the process because it was such a small amount of work that just had to, we had to have met and whatever. But she thought it would be, make more sense for us to be using our ARPA dollars instead of borrowing money. Um, and I didn't, I didn't know that. I didn't realize that you could use the ARPA funds for that. So as we reviewed, um, Candy's budget for total project, I believe was two hundred and twenty one thousand. I would think that the commission, um, it would be beneficial for us to spend ARPA dollars on her entire project and let her build her operational closure fund up. Because she's got other projects coming up too. And even pushing it a little bit further, she's got the capping of two and three.
Four and five.
A four and five, which is roughly another hundred and fifty thousand dollars that Sherwin is estimating in the next couple of years. So even if the commission would like to set aside three hundred and sixty thousand or four hundred thousand in the landfill out of the ARPA funding, I think that would really give her um, operational closure fund some time to build up because she really doesn't have, her compactor goes out, the loader or something, we don't have anything uh, set aside for capital improvements, you know. So I, I was just very excited to hear that, that we could use the ARPA, ARPA funding for this, and I, I believe I called Liza and told her about it right away.
How much ARPA funding do we have?
Um, currently we have, we were deposited in June, the seven hundred and ninety five thousand one hundred and fourteen dollars and fifteen cent, or fifty cents. And then we will receive the other half of that, um, in June of this year. So we'll be right short of one point six million, um, as of June.
Did we already dedicate some of this money for?
We have not dedicated any of this money for anything.
Anything?
We talked about doing our HVAC system, which that's on the next agenda. But as you recall, Jim had an estimate, you guys may not know this, Marvin probably, Jim had an estimate a couple of years ago, it was like six hundred and ninety five thousand. And then we, of course, facility solutions show us the estimate of one point five, which I think that was kind of out there. And if we can, you know, we'd also talked about, um, using some of the ARPA dollars to help maybe with the bridge south of the crossroads. But I don't know if the board is aware, um, House Bill fourteen fifteen oh five just was deposited on Friday, that was two hundred and seventy seven thousand. And then I believe the remainder of it is, I think it comes to one point one million total that the county road got out of this special session. So that will be deposited into the, um, township road fund, so they'll have those dollars to help with the bridge as well.
Do we have an estimate on what that bridge will cost?
I thought Charlie said right around eight to nine hundred thousand, but I don't.
I have those numbers, but I don't have them with me.
I think he shocked me in the hip when he said it.
Yeah, he said it was a.
Okay, using, I'm gonna go back to this ARPA funding, so we got roughly one point six, and I understand all that. The, if we do sell six and seven, what was the total cost?
I believe it was two hundred and twenty one thousand.
Two twenty one? So that gives us roughly one thirty eight, right?
It was one ninety eight, I'm sorry.
I'll just, let's just say it's two, two hundred.
But didn't we have to add like the twenty something from?
Well, yeah, the certification and the construction management.
So let's just say roughly.
Okay.
Two twenty, two twenty one, yeah.
Okay, so that gives us roughly one point four, and that would, if we use the ARPA money for our upgrade of our HVAC system, that'll pretty much use the ARPA funds.
I think when we want to do the HVAC, we, let's do a RFI on that.
Well, we did do an RFP, they're due back on, um, February second, but we're not tied into anything at that point.
Exactly, right. But that was our discussion at our last meeting.
Right. Which seems like it was a few years ago.
Yeah.
So anyhow, what I'm, what I'm saying is that if we want to use the ARPA funds for those two, it appears that we'll have close to what we need. Now, there are, Shannon mentioned House Bill fifteen oh five, and there's two other buckets that Charlie and I and, uh, Ken are working with coming from the state that we can use for some of our road funds. And I had a meeting with Charlie just a week ago, and because of our discussion at our last meeting uh, regarding HVAC system, we're, we're, we're making a three-year plan. And we're not intending on using at this point, unless the board changes something, we're not intending on including ARPA. But it's, it's a, it's an open live document that we can move these buckets around to different places. So I'm just letting you guys know that at this time, we're not intending on using that, so if this is the way we want to walk, so to speak, it sounds pretty good.
I, I think it sounds appropriate considering, like Shannon said, we want to build up Candy's funding. Because we know this is going to be coming. It's not anything where we're like, oh, maybe possibly, it's like, no, it's going to be coming. So I think it's appropriate that we do use those ARPA funding so that Candy can build up the rest of her monies as well, too.
So right now, our discussion is on using the ARPA money to do project. Sell, sells five and six. Do I, did I say that right?
Six and seven.
Six and seven.
Yeah.
Yep.
To, to narrow down, I, I know there was a lot said in our, in all the discussion here, but to narrow it down, we're gonna discuss using ARPA money for that six and seven project.
Yeah.
Okay.
So there's no action needed at this point?
Well, I think so, because we want to make sure that we know how we're paying for this. So I think it would be appropriate to get a motion to agree to use the ARPA dollars for this project.
Yeah, and just, and just this, that, and that's what would be, and that's what I'm trying to point out, not.
It would just be for the sell six and seven play liner construction.
Correct.
I will move that we use the ARPA funds for the landfill project for sell six and seven.
And I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
Just a slight discussion here. Um, the whole reason to go through the SRF prod, process was because if it was deemed SRF eligible, we were basically guaranteed that we could use ARPA funds. And the other thing was, uh, in our meetings at the county convention, um, they suggested using your ARPA funds whenever possible, when a project qualifies, so I think this is a good use in the way we should be proceeding.
And I'll just add one more note. Uh, I want to emphasize that I agree with what Liza said, I agree with what Travis said, every, all this discussion, that this is a really good idea, and then we have an opportunity to not deplenish the funds that are, we have in our landfill.
I concur. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Travis?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Marvin?
Aye.
Jean, aye. Motion carried.
I do have the notice of award, um, for that project too, if we can acknowledge that. I don't know, are we going to motion on that?
I don't know, you can, it's not on the agenda, is it?
Well, it's under the landfill, it's under that project.
But the landfill said SRF funding updated, didn't say award a contract.
But the thing with a notice of award, we awarded the bid.
So do I even need a motion? I can just have Jean.
No, you should be able to just sign it because we awarded the bid.
That's what I thought we awarded.
We did that at December meeting, right?
Yes.
That's my understanding. Okay, twenty twenty one budget amendments. I think, um, I'd like to say we, we're gonna approve some over budget amounts, not necessarily amend the budget. Okay.
I do want to mention that the audits, um, one went over the forty three three oh one, and, um, the funds were not journal entry at December month end from the CD interest fund in, back into the general fund, like the motion was made. It was forgotten, you forgot to do it. So it was a motion made. I'm wondering if the board still want me to go ahead and do it since the motion was made on that? Doesn't reflect the revenue numbers. The motion was already made to do it, so probably just do it at January month end.
I would.
Yeah, if it's.
All right, and then if you just noticed, like the state highway fund, that library, Mission on Aging Water Resource District, Custer Health and County Airport, they all brought in more money than we anticipated, so that's why, um,
Oh.
they're on there for budgets.
Which ones brought in more again, Shannon?
All the ones that say revenue exceeded.
Yep.
Oh, fifty, now I get it. Sorry.
Those are easy.
And then the CD interest fund, the fourteen oh six twenty three, that was the special assessments that we had paid on the, um, county owned properties here at Stanton, that we had made the motion to, um, expend those dollars out of that fund.
Well, I can, I'm comfortable.
Otherwise, I think that looks good.
I'm comfortable with these, um, revenue amounts that exceeded, other than any possible questions. Why? Because they're not, we're not even talking hundreds of thousands that they went over. State Highway Fund.
The State Highway Fund, we budget with the state twelveth to budget at that time. So you get more, that's always a bonus, it's better than not getting.
So.
When the, when I received this, in fact, I only got, today's Tuesday, I received this packet Monday, I didn't really have time to review. Uh, in fact, I still don't have the end of the year county official AS four hundred report. And that's what I use, but anyhow, one of the, I have two questions that just jumped out at me right off the top. And the very first one is, uh, the audit was forty three thousand three oh one exceeded. Well, our, our bill was for seventy four nine fifty, right? And we had thirty thousand budgeted, so that, that amount.
That was for the whole examination fee fund in the general fund.
So it wasn't just for the bill itself, it was the fees that we had set aside?
Right.
I don't understand what you just said.
There's two separate, there's two line items in that fund.
Correct.
That was the total that it was over. And I just emailed you the month end reports.
For December?
Yes. Today, this morning, eleven seven.
Well, I, well, I guess I didn't have them prior to this then. So if we, I'm looking at that budget right now, and it says thirty thousand dollars for audit fees, and repairs and maintenance was five thousand, that's thirty five thousand.
Yep, so it was forty three thousand over that, the total amount. And the same for the EM, that's within the general fund.
Well, okay.
It went over twenty three thousand in total.
Somebody, somebody subtract, Mike, talking about this brain fog that I was telling you guys before. Our bill was for seventy four nine fifty. The total budgeted amount, those two line items was thirty five thousand. What's the difference? That's thirty nine thousand nine hundred and fifty. That's still different than the forty three three oh one.
No, it's not. So the total fund, we spent seventy eight thousand three oh one eighteen out of, because you take your thirty five thousand and add the forty three thousand. Let me just look at the sheet.
Well, I guess I'm just looking at the bill.
Or it has nothing to do with the bill, it has to do with the whole, the total fund.
The bill was seventy four nine fifty. This is all the information I have. And then you look at the budget. It's thirty five thousand. So I subtracted that from that. And it comes out to thirty nine nine fifty, which is different than that, and I don't understand why. And sometimes I look at stuff simplistic, but that's.
Overthinking, things are to do with.
Yeah, I can do that a lot. And I get stuck in the middle, too. You see what I'm saying?
Well, she's looking that up. Are there questions on anything else in here?
The bill is.
It has nothing to do with the bills, old Marvin. It has to do with the budget and how much was spent.
Seventy four nine fifty. Our budget is thirty five. I'm gonna subtract those two and then look at this, so there's a difference here.
Okay.
But there's probably other expenses in there.
Audit fees, budget thirty thousand, we spent seventy four thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars out of there, zero cents. Line three eighty one, repair and maintenance, the budget was five thousand dollars, we spent three thousand three hundred and fifty one dollars and eighteen cents out of there. So for total examination fees, we spent seventy eight thousand three oh one eighteen. And the budget was thirty five thousand, which is a difference of overspending of forty three thousand three oh one eighteen.
That's correct.
Yep.
That makes sense.
Thanks, Shannon.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions?
Any a motion to approve the budgets?
Yes, please.
Okay, I will move to approve, uh, the amendments to the twenty twenty one budget as presented.
I'll second.
Any further discussion?
Yes, I'd like to make a comment, please. I'm going to vote no on this, and the reason I'm going to vote no is that I can't approve the recommended revisions for twenty twenty one at this time because I haven't received the year-end official county AS four hundred financial reports is what I reported to. And that's the only reason that I was going to vote no.
Okay.
I don't have time to review the documentation.
Okay, any further discussion? Hearing none. Travis?
Aye.
Liza?
Aye.
Marvin?
Nate.
Jean, aye. Motion carried. Okay, portfolio updates. I'm gonna start with, uh, Liza.
Um, ambulance didn't meet last month. We actually meet this coming Monday. I was at the LEPC meeting and Carmen was in here earlier discussing some of the things that she needs to work on with the hazardous mitigation contract. And then we are also working on seeing where we're going to do our scenario at and what we're going to use. Um, as a scenario, it sounds like we may be using one of the plants in a situation out at one of the plants. And that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Um, Travis?
Uh, Fair Board met last week. Um, they got about sixty percent of their, um, met lined up. Um, they might, uh, reorganize kind of some of our typical, uh, venue dates. I believe they were going to move the Ranch Rodeo to Saturday. Um, they're still looking to what they would do on Sunday. Um, but otherwise, they're just kind of in their planning mode. Um, fair is set for July fourteenth through the seventeenth. Um, Water Resource Board met last week. They're kind of in their, um, normal, uh, planning processes for projects in the, in the spring.
Not yet.
And, um, I believe the, gotta look at my calendar here, the, um, oh, the library. I think they meet the end of the month. But, so I'll have an update at the next meeting if we meet before the end of the month. That's all I got.
Okay, thank you. Um, the, uh, Fair Board, are they getting a little restructuring done there?
Yeah, I think things are going pretty well. They've, they've elected, you know, they had terms that expired, they reelected those in October. Um, things are starting to proceed a little more smoothly, um.
Good.
So.
Good.
Things are going positive in that direction.
I know it was a little rough in, on la- last year. Okay, thank you. Uh, Marvin?
Uh, I had two meetings, uh, just recently, one with Ken and one with Charlie Hansen of the engineering for the road department. And we're all three working together on and keeping track of the changing possible revenue sources that are becoming available. There's some updates that we're expecting pretty soon. There's another one that we're expecting in May. We got some costs that we don't expect to have completed possibly till May, so we're all keeping very cognizant of what's going on and we're talking to each other. And we've got a three-year plan that we got put together that looks like it'll work pretty darn nice as far as, uh, and that will be presented to the board. It isn't, it's something, it's just we're all three working together. So that's all I have on the roads. Um, I want to make any, uh, comment about, uh, our next meeting when we talk about portfolios. I've had the county extension portfolio for three years, and I thoroughly enjoyed it. I've learned more than I anticipated I would have to learn and found out that I only know half is what I should know. It's a, it's a very interesting board, all the stuff that they do for the county. But because I've had it for three years, I would entertain if anybody else wants to have it, that it would be an opportunity for the extension to get a fresh perspective. And I, the reason I brought this up now is because I have sent a letter to Jim Gray and to, um, there's that brain fog.
Craig.
Craig, Craig. And I stated what I just told you guys. There's no heartache, there's no hardship, there's nothing there. Uh, just think it would be an opportunity for the county to expand and get a fresh set of eyes on it. And I might still go to a lot of their meetings at, uh, when they have their presentations. It's very interesting. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. On mine, uh, I, about the only one I talked with here, I don't have much other than the sheriffs. And rather than me trying to repeat, I'm just gonna have Terry approach us and tell the rest of the commission the report he gave me.
Chairman Wolf.
Chairman Wolf, commissioners, morning.
Morning.
Happy New Year. You'll have to excuse my voice, I don't know, I've been battling one thing after another, I'm better, but my voice hasn't come back. I guess for a sheriff's update, we've been working on this for a while. Ashley's got pretty much all the paperwork completed. We gotta go back and make a couple changes, but we're looking, again, at, uh, housing federal inmates. And that letter in front of you takes away, I think, last time, you know, some of the concerns that some of the commission members had. It addresses them. In my opinion, this is a good idea for the county. We're looking at a time where I, I see people are worried about revenues. We're turning the lights on over there regardless, and the heat on, regardless of how many prisoners we have. And whether it's six or twenty, why not make that twenty and let the feds pay for turning the heat and the lights on, instead our county taxpayers? So, I think this is a win-win, there are, uh, some additional costs to the county. Uh, you know, of course, your, your grocery bills go up, uh, your inmates' handles, your clothing, stuff like that go up. But it, and nowhere comes near what we get reimbursed for from the federal government. With the letter I gave you, it, it, uh, they're spelling out the things they do do for us, and if you take the time to look at that, I think that, uh, makes it to a point of where it's a win-win situation. They need us for the bed space, and, uh, why wouldn't it be nice to, uh, let the federal government help pay for a facility we have to run anyway? And, uh, help pay for our transportation costs for our inmates, which we'll have anyway. Like I say, we're turning the lights on over there for, right now, since the pandemic, about six prisoners, on average, a day. Why not make it twenty, twenty-six? Because we, we're, we're saying twenty, that's, uh, you know, a figure where we draw the line at. Uh, we tell them how many we can take, ultimately. We don't have to take twenty if we have other things going on, or the county need, has a need of its own. Of course, county business comes first. Our facility can handle fifty-two people. Right now, we're, I believe we're underutilized. Our staff, is it gonna be more work to them? Absolutely. But what does that guarantee them in return? Not looking at, uh, staff reductions in the future because of hard budget times and stuff like that. It gives my employees stability, it gives them, you know, things there. Will they work harder? Absolutely, you know, you're taking care of a lot more people. But I have every confidence that our department can do this, and, uh, from what I can see, so do the feds. I'd like you guys to all take a look at it, this is gonna have to be a collaboration, you know? If it's gonna become contentious in the county or something like that. Our first goal always is, uh, for our citizens and their public safety and well-being. So, if we're gonna create any type of divisions or anything, we'll just walk away from it. I'd rather not do that. If we can all get on board and say, "Let's do this for our taxpayers," uh, I can make it happen.
Okay, just to let the rest of the commission know, I definitely inquired our sheriff, did, asked our sheriff's department to look into this. I have some general information. I don't wanna disclose who or what, but, and they are not in the sheriff's department, who worked in an area of this sort, worked in a, uh, law enforcement facility, and worked with these, uh, federal inmates. And that person indicated to me that there is no, under no way were these inmates like, uh, Chainsaw Massacre people or whatever, they were basically low-level inmates that just ended up having, having to spend time in federal prison, and there was never violence with anyone. They were, other than them ha- doing, doing a crime and having to spend time, I was told they were good people to work with, they're not violent.
These are North Dakota prisoners, for the most part, and right now, North Dakota, or the federal government is housing North Dakota prisoners as far away as Nebraska. And, uh, that's what they're trying to get away from, you can see the cost they're incurring. Uh, and, and like you said, also, these prisoners, uh, are at no time going to touch any soil other than Mercer County Correctional Center soil. They're not out in our community, they're not, if, if they are, for a medical appointment or whatever, which is another thing, another cell. This brings business to our local hospitals and clinics. Uh, if, if they are out in the public and they are transported, it will be by armed officer, and that's federal standard that we can adhere to. So, i- it's the same as us transporting our own prisoners, so...
And most of these prisoners, they're not here for five, six years, they're short-term.
Short-term, and none of these prisoners are released from Mercer County. They go back to be out-processed at a federal processing center. So, like I say, we're not turning them loose to walk away here in Stanton, like we do with our own, you know, local people, and they get picked up for whatever purpose. If they don't have a ride home, then we give them a ride home, if they're locals, these are different. They go back to where they come from, they're out-processed.
This is basically just a, a temporary stay for the prisoner.
For them, yes.
They're, they're brought here because we would have a bed for them, and then they're processed back out, back to, for the lack of better terms, where they came from. So...
And, and they say right in, right in the email that I gave you, they pay for all medical expenses for the inmates, that's not a concern. Like I say, that's just a net gain for our community, not the sheriff's department. They're telling us that even if we take one of their prisoners over to the hospital, and our prisoner has to go, also, they pay for the entire trip, they pay for the transport cost. So, there again, we're back to, if you turn the lights on for one or six that are our prisoners that we have to turn on anyway, and the heat, why not do it for a twenty, and get paid, and take the burden off our taxpayers?
Which one of these two agreements are you looking at? You got the LUAA and the IGA. I'm just questioning because this for information, not picking. The very first paragraph, you said there's two different types of agreements.
Oh, okay. What's that? We're doing the IGA.
Remember two then, that's, that's what you were recommending at this point.
Yes, yes, like I say, uh, I'm looking for, uh, collaboration from you guys, and of course, like I say, the North Dakota Century Code allows the sheriff and the sheriff's department to enter into these agreements. But, uh, we also understand that, uh, the fiduciary responsibility is your guys'. If we would enter into it this year, it would drive our, our, probably our overtime budget and our, our food budget, stuff like that, over. But, on, on paper, but in return, you're getting a check back that isn't going back to the sheriff's department. It's going to
The General Fund.
The General Fund, for money that's far exceeding what our expenditures went over.
The application for reimbursement from the state, how long does that typically take?
From the feds?
From the feds.
Yeah, they, they say they pay all their bills, again, on time, all the time, so...
So, every thirty days, you say?
Yeah, we're gonna take them at their word.
We'd, we'd probably be thirty days behind.
Yes.
Right.
Something like that.
And if any...
Now, in, in the future, that is something to look at, too, our, our plan is, is to start out slow. And, and I've talked to, I've talked to the Marshal Service personally, start out slow, start with five, start with ten, see what problems we run into, you know, there's gonna be bumps in this. If we think there's not gonna be, we shouldn't enter into it. We'll overcome the little bumps on the road, start out slow with the staff we have, and ultimately, if we start ramping up to where we have twenty on a fairly, uh...
Consistent.
Positive, or long-term basis, yeah, we're gonna have to, we're gonna get to the point where it's gonna be cheaper to add another jail employee, instead of pay that much overtime to all the jail employees. And at that time, I think us, us as a sheriff's department and a commission can discuss that and come to an agreement on it. But I think we're looking at just twenty prisoners, if you do the math, you're looking at five hundred thousand dollars possible revenue for the year, each year. And with, what I would, what I would say is, not, no bumps in the road for our community. Like I say, our, our, our facility's set up for it. It's not gonna be taking away from any services we offer to the county. To me, I, I think it's a positive thing, I think we need to try to, like, like you brought up earlier in the meeting, I heard revenues. Well, this is a revenue stream for the county, not necessarily for the sheriff's department. We won't, we won't see it back in our budget, but you'll sure see it at the bottom line at the end of the year.
Okay.
Can you, it says here, uh, if someone in your office input, uh, information like the operating costs, have you already made a table what, per, per, per prisoner, what the costs might be?
Yes, Ashley is, we've, we've filled out and completed the applications on this, this is already, that part is already done, that they've asked for a couple corrections back, and we're doing that now. So, and as I discussed with this commission before, uh, when it started getting serious and we started having to look at making real decisions about it, that's when I'd approach, and I guess that's why we're here today.
I would like to get a copy of what you presented for costs. I'm just gonna speak from myself, not the board, okay?
Sure.
Everything that I see here tells me that our county, because we've already made this investment in this jail, and we're not capitalizing on the opportu- or possible opportunity, that once we know what we think the costs might be for this coming year, we might have to amend the budget, like for the food or so forth. And that needs to be brought to us
Yes.
sooner than later. What I'm, what I'm saying, and I might put myself on a limb here, is that even if the first year we didn't materialize a profit, I think this is something that needs to be investigated, and probably the only way to investigate it is to put it into practice. And first, I'd like to see what the costs are, though, and what the possible state reimbursement is, you know, what's the scenario?
Absolutely.
So, to me, it's, and I'll say it again, a little bit of risk here, is that even if there's a possible risk of it costing our county a little bit the first year, possibly even two years, who knows? It's something that we need to investigate so that we can capitalize on the investments we've already made.
Yes, sir. I, I believe that with the investments we already made, you know, we just passed our last, uh, jail inspection with what I would consider some of the best, uh, standards in the, in the state. Uh, we meet all the requirements, our investment already is here. I think we're just, we're looking at immediate, uh, money coming into the county.
The capital investments, you mean, but...
Yes, our investments have been made by this commission in the past.
The operational costs, we still have to...
Yeah, as long as we meet the state standard, we're gonna meet the federal standards, is what they're telling us.
Okay, then, um, how soon are you, how soon do you need an okay, how soon can you apply for this? Can you, can you start this tomorrow, can you start this July first, can you start it September first? What I'm saying is, since it wasn't an item on our agenda, we need to put it on the agenda, which would be like next meeting for approval? And, um, and then you can bring those numbers for Marvin in between then.
We could have that by next, next meeting.
My, that, my question is, is this something that we could just start anytime?
When, when our application is complete, uh, our understanding of it is, is that's how we're gonna start. And I've already discussed this with the Marshal's Office
Okay.
that we wanted to start on a step-by-step. I said, if anything, let's take five and go two weeks.
What I'm getting at is, this isn't something that has to be done by March first, or else we can't enter into it for another year or something?
For us, we'd be covered legally until we start knowing that we're gonna exceed the fiduciary responsibilities of what you've provided for us to run the jail, and at that time, we'd need a vote from the commission. So, when we start taking prisoners, before we start taking prisoners, we're gonna need your guys' okay to exceed that, you know, the parameters.
So, hypothetically, there could be even a, we could even, this could, if they pay their bills, like you said,
This could materialize this year.
Say on a monthly basis, by August, we could start seeing, if we okayed, we could start seeing
Revenue.
the revenue coming in, and then we can even by then weigh the expenses against the revenue, okay?
Yes, sir.
Just to answer questions for people who watch.
Sure.
Okay.
Look forward to receiving that, what I call a business plan, so to speak.
Thank you. And then our other issue is, uh, the vehicle for this year. Ashley and, uh, Chris Waller, our deputy that procures our vehicles, they have pretty much searched the country now for a police vehicle that we could buy this year and outfit, and it's not, right now, we were hoping a big outfit would back out, and we could try to get in on a deal on the back end. It's not gonna happen, we, I don't know if it's a microchip problem, or a shipping problem, or a GM problem, or a COVID problem, or an economy problem, but there is not one police vehicle for sale that would fit for our department at, right now, for this year. So, we were looking at, we're gonna have to do something into the long term to inform you guys that, you know, we don't wanna go and try to get something, I say offload, because it'll cost more, it'll have options that police cars shouldn't have, like carpet and, you know, leather seats and heated seats, stuff like that, we don't want. Uh, it'll cost more, and then it costs more, more for us to outfit it. We're looking at, uh, is bringing that to your attention, and if we have to, I think we can make our fleet work this year, with the understanding that next year, maybe we could look at rolling that money into a fund where now our need for our vehicles are gonna be, you know, twice as much as they were this year. So, if we could start considering that, I, I got our people still looking, but I'm fairly confident now we're not gonna find anything that's acceptable in our price range.
The money in the special vehicle fund just stays in there.
It does.
If you don't find anything, you'll just, next year?
It'll just increase.
But it's, it's a big problem with even parts, I got, we got one vehicle down right now, or it's gonna be down for warranty. And, uh, what was that thing, converter? I forget what he called it, yeah, but anyway, it's down, and they can't get that part, and it's under warranty, no cost to the county. But our vehicle is down for six weeks, we can't get the part. I don't know what to do, but, well, we know what to do, we're gonna put our spare into operation and take that vehicle out of operation. So, we're gonna have some challenges because of this nonsense that's going on in the country, as far as procurement for the things we need to operate. And we'll, we'll try to work through them, and we'll keep you informed.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Just know refining us already helps us out. And we were cognizant of the vehicle, but I guess I never attributed, well, what our police department are gonna do now. So, thanks.
About to buy horses.
Yeah. And, and we'll keep in touch, of course, with our portfolio holder, and on, on, uh, the day-to-day, when we hear further back from this federal, or Marshal's contract, uh, I'll give Chairman Wolf a call right away.
Okay.
Thank you, appreciate your...
Thank you, Terry.
Wouldn't you email me that, why don't you send it to all the board members?
Okay.
It doesn't do, I mean, collectively, we can make a better decision than just one...
I'll definitely prepare you guys before you have to make any votes, that way you can, okay, with your constituents or whatever.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Terry. Well, that concludes my sheriff's department portfolio report.
Did you have any more?
That made it easy for me. I don't have anything else. Yep, meeting adjourned.
Everybody stay healthy.